Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Murray Wesley. Sorry. Alderman Murray Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Weston.
Here.
I declare a quorum. Approval of minutes, meeting December 12th, 2013. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, report and recommendations, CMAP Housing Unit. And who's gonna, Jennifer, are you gonna take the lead here?
Uh, yes. This evening, we have some representatives from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning and Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus to talk about the Homes for a Changing Region Project. As you remember, this fall, the city passed a resolution to participate in this project along with the communities of Addison, Bensonville, and Villa Park. They're going to do introduction as part of their presentation, so I won't repeat that. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Jonathan from CMAP.
Great. So I'm actually gonna let Allison from the Mayor's Caucus start.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I am Allison Clements. I'm the Housing Director at the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. Our organization represents mayors from around the seven county region here in the Chicagoland area. And we are one of the partner organizations along with CMAP on this project, and as well as the Metropolitan Planning Council. Um, so I'm gonna talk briefly and just give you an overview of this project. Um, and then I'll touch on some national and regional housing trends. Um, and then Jonathan will go over the initial analysis for your community, and we'll talk about next steps. Um, so this project started back in 2005. Uh, we worked with a consulting firm at that time, um, to kind of look at housing trends across the region and future population growth over the next thirty years. Um, we wanted to think about how our region was going to grow, um, whether we'd have an aging population, whether we'd have changing demographics, and how we could meet the needs of that changing population, um, through different housing types. Uh, and this basically emerged into this Permanent Homes for a Changing Region Project, where we took that region-wide analysis and really drilled it down to the municipal level. Um, so the project is really people-focused. We're thinking about who's gonna be living in Wooddale over the next, uh, through the year 2040. Um, and it's market-based, thinking about what are the different demand types for housing in your community? And it's also sub-regional, so not only are we gonna be doing a housing analysis for your community, but we're also looking at what you have in common in terms of housing challenges with your neighbors. So like Jennifer said, Addison, Villa Park, and Bensonville. And are there some strategies that you could work on collectively, um, related to addressing those housing gaps? So this project is offered, um, free of charge to your community and the other communities through a number of funding sources, um, that are up on the slide. And, uh, like I said, it is a partnership between the Mayor's Caucus, CMAP, and MPC. Um, we've been working on this project with CMAP for the last, I believe, two years, is it Jonathan? Um, and we've been working in over twenty communities so far. So, um, we found that it's really well-received. It's also, uh, really helpful, and these aren't plans that are sitting on the shelf. They're really, um, making an impact, and communities are using them to make steps towards implementation. Um, up on the slide, you'll see a couple of examples of plans that we did in different areas. Uh, we worked in the south suburbs, and there, they are moving forward with a land bank initiative to deal with vacant properties in their areas. Um, some communities in near West Cook County have raised over ten million dollars in funds to create a single-family rehab and revolving loan fund. And then some northwest suburban communities around the Arlington Heights area are moving forward with some senior housing recommendations from the report. So, um, we're hoping that your community will find this analysis, uh, really helpful. This is just one of many presentations. We'll be back over the course of, uh, the next year to kind of present, um, our findings and get your feedback. So tonight is just really an overview of our initial analysis. So we like to talk, um, start the presentation by really kind of framing how the housing market is changing today and putting that in some context before we get into your specific, um, data findings. And what we're really finding is that the coming decades are going to be a time of urbanization. So communities like Wooddale that are close to a major, um, urban center are gonna be attractive to populations, um, for, for young folks and for aging populations as well. Um, we're finding that the American home of the future are gonna be, is gonna be smaller and more energy-efficient. Some of the McMansions that were built over the last ten years may be less appealing as people are really more focused on housing that is affordable to them. And we'll talk about what that means a little bit later. We're also finding that multifamily housing has rebounded first since the, the housing market crash. Um, and this is really across all age groups and, um, races and incomes. Um, and it also has implications for rental housing as well in terms of folks looking more towards rental housing as an option, um, than, than they did before. So there's really four demographic groups that are driving this new housing market. Um, older baby boomers, um, are the aging population that's really growing in size and maybe thinking about, um, selling their houses that they're in and options that are gonna be friendly. Maybe they wanna stay in their community, so what options they have within Wooddale. Um, younger baby boomers, so these are folks who are aged forty-six to fifty-four. Many of these folks may be unable to sell their current suburban homes. Um, maybe they paid a higher price back in 2007 for them and they're underwater in their mortgage. And so they have less flexibility to move. Um, Generation Y, so folks who are in their late teens to early thirties, who are gonna be renting for a lot longer than past generations and are also probably struggling with a lot of student loan debt as well, which can affect when they're gonna be purchasing homes. And then immigrants and their children. Um, we're finding that many immigrants are by, have been historically bypassing the city of Chicago and coming straight to suburban areas because they're attracted to the schools. They may have networks here, so that also has implications for housing demand as well. So these are kind of some of the groups that we'll be thinking about as we do an analysis, um, for your community. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Jonathan to talk through some of the data findings.
Thanks. So as Allison said, uh, and sort of touched on before, this is the first of a series of presentations. One of the things we like to do is, from the very beginning, is start to give you guys information, data, about your community. A lot of it's US Census data, so a source that you may have heard of in the past. And then try and use that as a jumping off point for what we do in the rest of the project in terms of outreach and sort of getting a feeling from you, you all here today, and then also the, the citizens of your community in terms of where they think Wooddale should be going in the future in terms of housing, and trying to combine those together. So it's both data-driven, but at the same time, it's designed to really build off of what, what your residents are interested in, and then use those things together to come up with, with strategic plans, policies, ideas about, uh, future housing here in, here in Wooddale. So with that in mind, I wanna give some information about data exactly here in Wooddale and some information. Some of it's you're probably familiar with, uh, from the two thousand cent, or 2010 census. You had a population of a little bit shy of fourteen thousand, and that's increased since, since 2000. The number of households here has also increased. You have, uh, about five thousand, two hundred households. And your median household income is about sixty-three thousand dollars a year. And that's important to think about in terms of, of the sort of ages and demographic groups and income groups that are available in your community. It's very much a, a middle-income community, a very much an upper-middle-income community. Uh, and, and that sort of gives you an idea of maybe what, what it might mean in terms of housing in the future. Uh, and eight point three percent of your population, uh, in, as of the 2010 census, uh, was living below the poverty line. In terms of our racial and ethnic makeup here in Wooddale, uh, the majority, the vast majority of the population, uh, are, are white. But there's also a sizable minority that is identifies as Hispanic along with individuals who identify as black, Asian, or other. One of the things that we, we think is important to think about are the types of units that are available here in your community because, right, different people at different ages and income groups demand different types of housing. You know, somebody who's twenty-five making twenty-five thousand dollars a year is different, interested in a different type of housing unit from somebody who's fifty-five making seventy-five thousand dollars a year, and different still from somebody who's eighty-five and, you know, maybe living on a fixed income of social security. Those all have different, different impacts in terms of what types of housing units people want. And a good basis when thinking about projecting out in the future what types of housing people may want here in, uh, here in Wooddale, it's also important to think about what you're starting with in terms of a housing stock. Obviously, as you all know, the vast majority of your housing units here in this community are single-family detached, uh, homes, as, as this chart shows. But you do have, uh, both an owner and a rental stock at other price points. That both being in some of those larger structures. Obviously, you can see that there's, there's a component of, of people who live as owners in units that are fifty or more. You can probably think of the sort of the, the complex that fits that bill and what that would be here in your community. And you can see that there's, there's a wide availability of units throughout the, throughout the different sizes. So whether that be single, from, single-family detached homes all the way up to people living in, you know, in fourplexes, to people living in con, much larger, uh, housing complexes as well. We also, the import, as I said before, because the different combinations of ages and incomes and what they have in terms of an impact on future housing demand and current housing demand, we also think it's important to look at several different, eh, income groups throughout the spectrum, uh, ranging from households earning below fifteen thousand dollars a year to above a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And we break it into the, these sort of seven large income groups. And this chart here is showing what those look like in terms of the numbers of owners and renters. As you can see, the number of owners and renters, there's renters throughout really mo, almost all of the income groups except for those households making more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. The renters are in red, the owners are in that sort of dark blue color. But there's, but there's renters and owners at a, a variety of different income groups, uh, throughout the spectrum here. But I should also point out, you can see the largest numbers in that sort of fifty to seventy-five range, right in the middle, the big bump, right in the middle of the, the series of bar charts. And you, really, that speaks to what we talked about before with median household income of sixty-three thousand dollars a year. That's about where you'd expect to see that sort of bump, very much a, a middle-income community. When we talk, one of the things that we talk about throughout this project is the concept of affordability. Now affordability can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people, so I wanna be clear about exactly what we mean when we talk about affordability in terms of this project. What we're talking about is, uh, the percentage of, of income that people spend on housing costs. So that's a relative measure. Sometimes people spend a lot, a high, really high percentage of their income on housing costs. Sometimes people spend a really low percentage of their income, whether somebody's making fifteen thousand dollars a year or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. There's a percentage that makes sense for them. Uh, the generally, the rule of thumb that's historically been used is that should, that figure, that percentage should be around, around thirty percent. So here, we're talking about renters in Wooddale. You know, we're talking about rent, plus we're also thinking about utility costs. What are those factors together? How much are you paying as a percentage of your income when you add those factors up? If you're paying a really high percentage, you know, there are, there are some people who are paying more than thirty percent. There's some people, as you can see from the, the percentage that's in red on the chart on, above. Uh, there's also a percentage of people are spending, more than fifty percent of their income on, on housing costs, in particular renters here, here in Wooddale. And that's important because it has a variety of other impacts, both from health impacts on people who live in those households, but also impacts here for your fiscal bottom line. That's, that's less money that somebody has to spend at shops or stores or restaurants here in town because they're spending it, uh, to make sure that they have a roof over their head. So this chart is actually showing the change in the percentage of renters, uh, who are paying more than thirty and more than fifty percent of their income between 2000 and 2011. So on the left, we have the percentage in 2000, and in 2000, on the, on the right, we have the percentage in 2011. And those red and those yellow bar, segments on those bar charts are the people, the yell, the yellow is people paying more than thirty percent, and the red is people paying more than fifty percent. And you can see that that grew over the last decade. So there's more people paying higher percentages of their income to rent here in Wooddale than there were, was about a decade ago. That's not uncommon. There's a lot of communities throughout the region that have seen the exact same trend. That's, so you're very much in, in line with what's happened with everyone else, but there's obviously impacts that that has in terms of how stable people can be, uh, living in housing units if there's paying really high percentages of their income on housing costs. And we can look at the same sort of information for owners. So this is the same thing, 2000, 2011, with the yellow being people thirty to fifty, and the red being people paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing costs. And this is for owners in Wooddale. And, and once again, this trend mirrors what was saw in the region as a whole. But I also think it's important to, to point out what we're talking about is components of owner costs. You know, we're talking about things like your mortgage, your property taxes, or your, or if you have insurance on your house or utilities. Those are all factors that would go into that. And there's a higher percentage of people now than maybe there was a decade ago paying, paying as owners, higher, uh, more than thirty and more than fifty percent of their income on housing costs. One of the main things that we do as part of this project, or at least the data side of this project, is projecting out in the future exactly what future housing demand will be here in, in Wooddale. And we use that, we combine a variety of sources. We use current US Census data. We also use projections that CMAP has come up with for future households and population growth in communities throughout the region, uh, so specifically in those numbers here in Wooddale. And we look at how those numbers combine together along the sort of the regional, or the national trends that, that Allison outlined before, and think about how those come together to, to project what might be future housing demand, people who wanna live here in Wooddale in the future, and what sorts of housing units they might like. Specifically, here, we're talking about ages and incomes. So this chart is actually showing, uh, the percentage, they're showing the change in, in growth amongst each of those various income groups between 2011 and 2040. And it's for various income, age groups as well. So there's four age groups are represented on this bar chart. You can only see three because one is so small that it really doesn't appear. And the one that you can't see because it's so tiny is the households under twenty-five. There's just not a lot of people, starting households, who are under twenty-five years old. A lot of people who are in college or in other circumstances, doubling up with friends, where they're not seeing a lot of growth in, in that, uh, household, starting in that age group. But, but you do see the people in the red group as a significant component of future owner housing demand here in Wooddale, people in that twenty-five to forty-four range, so younger working-age householders. You also see in that next range, the, the people in the green, that's forty-five to sixty-four, so, so middle-aged and slightly older, uh, where they are as well as part of future demand here in Wood, owner demand here in Wooddale. And finally, you see seniors, that purple gr, bar at the top, uh, where it's sixty-five plus. And so that's also an important part to think about, that really you guys have a very wide spectrum of people that we project that will want to own here in Wooddale in the future. People from a variety of different income groups. You can see that there's representatives from below fifteen thousand dollars a year to above a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. But you also have, uh, across a, a variety of different age groups as well. So there's, you know, younger, middle-aged, and older households, all of whom are, are interested in living here as owners in Wooddale in the future. But that's also part of thinking about what types of housing will attract them. So people interested in moving here, but making sure that you have housing that, that would be of interest to them when they, if they choose to make that move. So one of the things that we look at as part of that, as I said, is projecting out in the future. So this is actually looking at specifically, uh, the breakout between the current housing stock here in Wooddale and then the, the future demand. So we actually have three charts here, or three bars with, for each of the seven income groups. The orange bar is your current occupied housing stock, affordable at thirty percent of income in 2011. So that's saying that how many u, units do you have for owners in that particular income range that they could live in and spend no more than thirty percent of their income, uh, to live in that unit? And you can see that there's, while there's some at all the different income groups, the majority of them are, are in the middle part of the income segment. You have obviously a big bump right there in that sort of seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars range. Uh, there's a lot of units affordable in that segment. Obviously, you see a big gap in some of the income groups. Uh, there's not, obviously not a lot at less than fifteen thousand dollars a year. Frankly, it's very difficult for someone who's earning less than fifteen thousand dollars a year to afford, uh, to live in a unit that they own. For a variety of factors, it tends to be higher cost. If they're trying to buy a unit new, there's, it's really just very, very difficult economically to build a unit that's affordable at that income range. We also then compare that against that light blue bar. So those are the people, uh, demand at that, at each of those income levels in 2011, and then projected out in the future. So that dark blue bar is projected out into 2040, uh, projected demand at each of those income groups at 2040. And so one of the things we think is important is to look at where the big jumps between, where the differences in supply, the orange bar, and that dark blue bar in the future are. So there's some places where the orange bar is really much, much higher than the dark blue bar, where there's really sufficient supply. Your housing stock is providing a lot of units, and that they would be able to accommodate people interested in owning, uh, in those income ranges in the future. But at the same time, to make sure they fulfill that role, it's important to make sure you're maintaining your housing stock and continue to do that, and that's an important part of making sure your housing stock is, is, is ready for the future. There's also, on the flip side, possible shortfalls in supply, areas where those dark blue bars really exceed the light blue bars. And those dark blue bars are made up of a whole bunch of different people. Some of those are the in, age groups that we saw on the previous slide before I, I went into this sort of, this sort of, uh, bar chart. But it's also thinking at the same time about people who, who may wanna spend less than thirty percent of their income. You know, some of the people in these income ranges, you know, demanding housing at that fifteen to thirty-five thousand dollar range. Some of those are people who are actually making seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars a year, but just wanna spend a lot less. They don't wanna have to pay thirty percent. They may wanna only pay twenty percent or ten percent of their income on housing costs. And that you have a housing stock and have people who wanna make those sorts of choices here as well. We also do the same sort of analysis for renters in the future. Here, you can see the same, same sort of chart we talked about before, uh, where in this case, really, the dominant renters in the future, we expect to be people in the working age range, so people twenty-five to forty-four and forty-five to sixty-four. You can see at the top of the chart a little bit of purple, so there are, is a senior component there, but it's not a huge senior component. Obviously, we're projecting a lot more seniors, or seniors to be a, a much bigger part of future demand in, in, uh, in, for owners rather than renters, in 2040. But there's also, you may not be able to see it at the bottom of two of those charts, there's also a little bit of under twenty-five, but it's very, very small. You know, you know, where you're talking about three households over, over forty years. That, you know, that's well within any variance of what, what the model could project. And so this is that same sort of three-part chart that we talked about before, except for renters, where we're looking at exactly what those current supply is for the orange, and then that dark blue bar, uh, for the future, and thinking about where there's sufficient supplies. So in this case, for the rental housing stock, there's a lot of supply that more than meets demand right in the middle of that income range for fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar, uh, a year people. Uh, but there's possible shortfalls, both on the upper end of the income range and people on the lower end of the income range as well, where there's people who are interested in renting here in the future, people, uh, predominantly working age, uh, who want units, who may be interested in moving here if there's rental units available. One of the things that we think is important to think about, uh, housing as well, is not just what your housing stock looks like, but if you have local employment, or you have people who are living here, commuting someplace else, that impacts how people choose and where they choose to live, right? If you have to commute really far for your job, that may make it less attractive to live in a certain location. If your job's really close, or if your job's in a particular community, that may make it more attractive to live someplace. And this sort of gives you a breakout of the different industries that are really key here in, here in Wooddale in the future. Uh, so the big one that I wanna point out, about third of the way down, that really dark blue bar of employees is wholesale trade, that they make up, oh, really over eighteen percent of your local employment base here in your community. And manufacturing is big as well. Knowing your own community, you probably are aware of the sorts of businesses that tend to be major employers in your community, and this is reflective of that. One of the other things to think about at the same time, though, is the difference between, this is showing residents and employees. So that darker blue bar is employees, the lighter blue bar tends to be residents. So if you see places where the dark blue bar is really big and the light blue bar is really small, that's maybe a case where working with a local employer might, eh, there might be an opportunity for more people who work for that company to maybe live here in Wooddale. Might be an opportunity to work with them. People might be interested in living in your community. You may also see the flip side, which is, you know, you may see places where there's like healthcare and social assistance, where there tend to be more residents employed in that industry, so they're going someplace else than are actually working here in, in Wooddale. We also think it's important to think about exactly the locations that people are coming and going to. So for workers, where do Wooddale workers live? So if you've got a business here and there's employees commuting to a job, where are they coming from? That's what you're really looking at in this case, and this, and not surprising since you have a metro station in much of the regions, transportation infrastructure is designed to get people to and from Chicago. A lot of people work in Chicago. Uh, but, but people also do work in a number of other communities, including Des Plaines and other, number of nearby communities. That really shouldn't be surprising to many people, uh, that a lot of people do, obviously, try to live relatively close to where, maybe where they work. Where do Wooddale residents live? Obviously, Chicago is also a major driver here. That's sort of the largest portion of that, that circular chart up there. Uh, Chicago is, has about thirty-five percent. But then you also see, uh, a number of other smaller communities that are also part of that. It should be noted that, that these are individual municipalities. There's also another fifty percent of this chart that we're not showing because all the slices are tiny. It's a tenth of a percent, you know, one person going to this particular municipality. So while there's a concentration of people who go to places like Elmhurst, or places like Chicago, and people who live here in Wooddale and work here in Elk Grove Village, there's also about fifty percent of your population that's going all sorts of places, out to King County, down to Will County, up to Wisconsin, and all sorts of places in between. One of the things that we do as part of this project is, we talk a lot about projected future demand, but we'd be remiss if we only talked about exactly what maybe people are interested in doing in the future without also looking out sort of like a build-out analysis. What, given your existing zoning code, given the existing build-out structure in your community, how many people, uh, how many additional units could you build, given your existing zoning on the ground? So one of the things we do as part of that is we work with your staff, and I, and I know we've been, had a chance to work with, with Jennifer, to, to think about exactly, uh, what future capacity here in Wooddale might look like, and we do that by looking at two separate components. One is thinking about vacant properties, so properties where maybe there's nothing currently on it. The other one is redevelopable property, so properties that may change in the next thirty years. You may think about an underutilized property, maybe it's a surface parking lot someplace, or a, a small, older retail building from the forties that's just not really economical anymore, that maybe, that may change at some point in the future. And what we do is we try and use your zoning ordinance to look and see, well, does that area permit residential? And if they did, what is a developer trying to go whole hog, you know, really come in and think about, you know, how many units could you really cram onto a property if someone was trying to be greedy in that sort of way? And give you an idea of maybe what your existing zoning code allows in terms of the total number of additional units. So that's what we're looking at under that housing capacity by type, that we're look, talking about, about six hundred and twenty additional units when you look at vacant combined with redevelopable, so properties that may change in the next thirty years. And a big component of that is obviously large lot, single-family, that's about two hundred and thirty units. And you have multifamily as well, which is about three hundred and fifty-eight. That tends to be even larger. Uh, and a lot of that is actually from the zones in and around sort of your metro station, your downtown area along Irving Park, Irving Park Road. So next steps in the project, so this is obviously a first introduction to you of the project and some data around it, but we've got a lot of steps after this. Well, a very important part of that process is public engagement. So we, that, we're gonna be conducting that in, throughout the rest of January and into February through a website called MetroQuest. We'll be sending out the link. Please, all take the survey that's, that's part of that. It's an online survey tool that allows us to do a variety of different interactive activities to get information about the different housing types that people may want here in, in Wooddale in the future, and also think about areas that they may wanna see change, areas they wanna see, say, the same, you know? If you want, don't want an area to change, that would, that's important information to think about as part of this process as well. And that's something that, that this MetroQuest site does very well. Uh, so that's a big part of our public outreach. When we do these sorts of projects, we found that they've been very, very useful, uh, in get, helping us get good turnout, sometimes far better turnout in some communities than we even got with public meetings, actually. Holding a public meeting, you only get ten people that way, whereas if you send out a link and sort of meet them where they are, maybe on their laptop, or on their cellphone, or on their, you know, on their iPad at home, it's a lot easier to get someone to participate. And so in some communities, you know, uh, to give you an example, this past spring, we held a, held an outreach meeting in Elgin, and we didn't really get anyone because the Blackhawks were, I think it was game four of the Stanley Cup. So we got exactly zero people to turn out for that. They had rightfully so, other priorities. But when we did the public website, we got over a hundred and seventy-five responses that way. So it helped us get a lot better turnout than we really would have hoped for from a public meeting, so it's really good. And then from there, we will move into a municipal recommendations phase, where we'll be back out here to talk with you, because the idea behind this whole process is it's, you know, we provide you with data and help you do some of the outreach, but at the end of the day, we like the recommendations. We, they're obviously most useful. Communities implement them if they're driven by you, if they're resonant with you. So we'll help you develop those, but we wanna make sure we're out here talking with you and, and getting your feedback throughout the process. And then ultimately, there's also a sub-regional component as well, as Allison and Jennifer both mentioned. Uh, you're working on this with your partners in Addison, Bensonville, and Villa Park. And there's an opportunity to think about maybe how some, if you find you have shared housing issues, if there's a topic that three out of you, three out of the four of you, or maybe all four of you shares an issue that you wanna tackle, there may be an opportunity for collaboration to work on that in a way that you haven't in the past and, and be more effective in doing it. But that's part of the whole process, is to figure out if those exist and what those are. So, uh, one other point I guess I'll bring up is there's an option, optional focus area visualization. We think that this is sometimes helpful. We, obviously, you guys saw a lot of data. Data can be kind of boring. Uh, when, while we can have people When, while we can have people fill out survey results, sometimes that's kind of boring to just put a bunch of tables that say how people responded to a survey in the report. So we like to do a focus area visualization, where maybe you pick an area of the community, and we try and use the data that we have in terms of what types of housing units people might be interested in the future, along with the areas that we hear from your residents that maybe would be the most susceptible, ripe for change, areas they're interested in seeing change occur, and what they think is appropriate there. And mush that all together and create some pictures that show maybe how that would look, given the feedback that we've heard, so that people can walk away with an image rather than looking at a, a hundred-page book of statistics. It's a lot easier to walk away with that image and to really get the idea that's, that's behind it. So, that's what, that's what we have. If you guys have any questions, I think it would be great to, to be able to answer them and, and to tackle any questions. Thank you.
Alderman Winger.
Bag about eight slides. You, you went through the two bars. There was the residents versus employees, and you pointed out the wholesaler. I wasn't quite clear on what that was depicting. But, so residents of Wooddale have that occupation.
Correct.
Whether they work in or outside of Wooddale, is that correct?
Correct.
And then the employee bar was...
People who have, so think about it this way, if you're working at Target here, but you don't live in Wooddale, you fall in the employees category.
Okay.
If you are a, if you are a resident of Wooddale, but working at the wholesaler, you would also fall in the employees bar, right? So anyone employed here, working at a job here physically in Wooddale, is in the employees bar. And a resident is anybody who's employed, who's working at a job, whether they're working here in Wooddale, or at O'Hare, or downtown Chicago, or anyplace else. They're fall in the resident bar on, in this chart.
And, and then the highest was again wholesalers?
So the highest for employees was wholesaler, and the highest for residents was manufacturing. There's a very similar share of, of, of residents who work in manufacturing and live here and work in manufacturing.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
Okay, no other questions? I thank you for the presentation. Mayor Police, I didn't see you, sorry.
The website, you mentioned the website.
Yes. We, we don't have the link finalized yet. We will make sure to forward that out to you, so when we have that live, we will make sure you get it, so that you can send it out. It's very important to, to, to send it out. We find that Facebook, Twitter, those sorts of things, Facebook works really well to get that link out.
Because you say January, February is the public outreach.
Yes, so the idea is that it'll be towards the end of this month, but it will include a portion of the month of February, so it's probably about a week or week and a half away, but yes.
Eugene Wesley.
I, I have one question. When we, when you started the presentation, you said there's mayors involved in your committee, right?
Yeah, in our, in the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, our organization represents the mayors from around the region, yes.
And what mayors are, are there in Page County?
All, technically, all of the mayors in Page County are members.
Okay.
So, so we have...
Mayors and managers.
Right.
That falls under, okay, that's fine.
We represent, you know, two hundred and seventy-plus mayors.
Mayor Roselle and Ms. Page Mayor.
Right, so each of the council of government has appointed representatives to serve on our executive board, so Page Mayors and Managers has a representative as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Next, we have a report and recommendation, two seventy-seven Edge Brook. Jennifer.
All right, similar to our last committee meeting, where we had one for two hundred and Forest View, we're now requesting approval of a demolition proposal for two seventy-seven Edge Brook for sixty thousand dollars as part of the FEMA buyout program.
Does anybody have any... Eugene Wesley.
I just have one question. So, this is for demolition, this, this premise, right? And the asbestos come back?
Ah, yes, the asbestos is, will be a separate contract.
So there'll be another contract coming forward, and when will that be coming forward? So...
That was a relatively small contract. I think it was like, for like twelve hundred dollars or something, so staff is just going to administrate it.
All right, and this is one of the buildings that no one wanted to use before we tear it down?
Due to the asbestos and the proximity to the daycare center, it was recommended not to be used for that sort of activity.
May I do one follow?
Sure, go ahead. You're on a roll.
So, so my question is, once they demol it and remove all the debris in that, we are just turning that in the grass area? We aren't doing anything with it at this time?
Mr. Murmice.
Until the treatment plant construction's completed, we would just restore it to its natural state with the grass. The lift station would still be, you know, further west on the property. Then once the treatment plant's completed, I think the lift station would be moved a little bit further east, expanded, but in the interim, yeah, just natural state.
I would like, one other question.
Sure.
I, I would like to know who is the asbestos removal contractor before, you know, before that happens.
Do we have that information now, or?
We have it, we have it now. I can put it in the packet tomorrow.
Okay, it'll be in the pack? Any other questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Not to exceed the dollar amount?
Well, are we going to add in the twelve hundred, or we're just doing that administratively?
Separate contract.
All right, so, and the not to exceed amount of sixteen thousand dollars. That is my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, let's, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next, report and recommendation, CDC recommendation, three sixty-five East Irving Park Road.
Thank you. At last month's CDC commission, they made a recommendation to approve the request for a warehouse at three sixty-five East Irving Park Road. This is a building that Rosario Jewelers is in the front. There's a warehouse space in the back and some residential above. The tenant would be using this space for landscaping and snow removal equipment. He's represented that it's going to be really on a seasonal basis. At the end of the landscaping season, the trucks will come in, get their plows attached, and the plows will be on the trucks throughout the snow season. Then, when snow season's over, come get the plows removed and stored back in the building, so they're not coming in on a daily basis or generating loud amounts of noise on the site. The property has historically been used for industrial spaces, particularly that back space. Some of the previous uses were wrought iron fabricator, print shop, heating and AC contractor, and a motorcycle repair shop. So, staff was supportive of this request, as was the Community Development Commission, and so that is our recommendation for approval.
Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley.
If staff's recommendation is for this, staff should be able to tell me how much gasoline's going to be stored in this building?
None.
So when they store these lawnmowers, when they switch, there's not going to be no gas whatsoever in those tanks?
I suppose there's maybe some within the equipment themselves, but he won't be storing cans of gasoline or anything like that.
Are you, are you aware of that one, one machine could hold up to ten gallons of gas?
No, I was not aware of that.
So, if you have eight or nine lawnmowers in there, you got ninety gallons of gas possibly, not counting. Is, is, are they going to be storing fertilizer in the building too?
Uh, no, this is not their main storage facility. It's just off-season equipment.
If it's off-season and they get extra fertilizer, are they going to be storing fertilizer in it if they don't use it during the season?
No, he said there'll be no fertilizer and no salt stored there.
Is, that's okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll make... Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So, are we changing rezoning in this?
Uh, no.
Why this is here?
Uh, the zoning is the C two district, and it's here for a special use for a warehouse. C two doesn't allow you to do a zoning by right. You need to go through the public hearing process for that.
Let me ask you a question. So we stand up here, and I'll bring up the statement that was made here a couple of weeks ago. We sit up here and we put together a, a plan for redevelopment in downtown area. We spent months putting it together, and now we're coming back here, and someone made a comment last time saying, why are we making a change anywhere? When we spent all these months on putting this together, now we're coming back for a special use. It wasn't designated, we, we talked about it up here before, about not changing once we made our plans, and now we're doing it again. So that, that would, that statement did not even come from me. That came from another Alderman on this committee last couple of months ago, that we wasted all this time rezoning, and, and why are we back here again discussing it? I, I just don't understand it. Then we might well not even waste our time rezoning everything and going through all these meetings, if we're going to come back and rezon it. And the other thing is, there's, is there people living above there in the apartment building? Is, is there living quarters upstairs?
Uh, as the, as the property owner stated, they're, they're not above the warehouse portion, no. And to address your other question regarding the, the zoning, there, the property's zoning will remain the same as it has been. The issue for a special use is that you have uses that are permitted, meaning that you can just move in, get your building permits, and, and do that. And there are also uses that are special uses. Those are ones that may or may not be appropriate in specific locations. When the council adopted the Unified Development Ordinance back in two thousand and eleven, they looked and said, in the C two district, there may be places where a warehouse is appropriate, and there may not be places where that's appropriate. So that's why it was designated as a special use, rather than something that's permitted or prohibited, really saying that the council wanted to look at these on a case-by-case basis. So that's the difference between a special use versus rezoning, which changes completely what you can do with the property in perpetuity. So the special use is specific to, to this location and this request. If the landscape contractor were to move out, there is a relatively short time period. So if in another year, someone else wanted to come in for a different industrial use, they would not be able to do that. They'd need to come back before this council for a similar request.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
For this area, I don't think that we should put this here. The reason is, is because of the gasoline residential right, right above us, right above, above it, or right next to it. There's no way that the city's going to regulate how much gas is in there, one. Two, you're not going to sit there, staff is not going to sit here and tell me that they're going to go over there and check every other week to see if there's fertilizer or salt in there that could create a fire. So, in that case, they're not bringing any tax dollars. They're right on Irving Park. At least with the motorcycle shop, we, we got some sales tax from that for, for repairs and stuff on parts, but we get nothing on this. I feel that belongs in the industrial area, and that's how I feel about it.
Alderman Sosmerzke.
I hate to ask this question, but do you not own a landscaping business?
All my equipment is stored in my trailer.
Not in your garage, not in your property? Does the city come by and check at all?
I have a business license and they do.
It's not in the industrial park?
My equipment's stored in my trailer.
This gentleman's just trying to make some money by storing machines there during the winter. That's all he's doing. He's not looking to operate out of there. If we, if he can buy, you know, if he'd concede to emptying all the machines with fuel and leaving them empty and winterized, I don't see a problem with it. And as long as he doesn't have fertilizer and other hazardous materials in there.
Alderman Lazara.
Thank you. Do we know how many square feet we're talking about as far as this storage area?
It's about twenty-eight hundred square feet. Can I make any other comments?
Can you stick to the podium, please?
And for the record, could you give us your name and address?
Yes, I'm Joe Truball, I'm the owner of the building along with my mother. To address some of the concerns, number one, my son lives in the apartment above. If I felt in any way, shape, or form that there was any dangerous materials in there, do you think I would let my son live there? Okay, they answered that question. Second of all, he has a large landscaping business. This is just an ancillary site for him. It is not something that's in the building. Okay, there are small lawnmowers, plows, ton of plows that he just switches off. Very seldom comes in there. There is no fertilizer in there. There is no storage of gasoline. Do you think I would want my building blown up? There's no way I go in there and check it myself, so there's no way I would possibly let anything that would be hazardous to my son's health, to the tenant in front, or to anyone else. I ensure that this property is, he has been in there for a while, and he has been a wonderful tenant, doesn't cause any noise, anything that's behind that property. So it's a perfect use. This, the warehouse has been there for fifty years, sixty years. It's a warehouse. It's been there. Okay, and it's been in that existing property for a long, long time. So I think this is a perfect use. Would I like to have the building rented to one tenant? Yes, I would, but that's not reality. Reality is, is you have to be able to have someone that's available that will rent the property for a use. Okay.
Alderman Wesley, Roy Wesley.
This is out of my norm to ask a question like this. You made a statement that he's using it now?
He is, yeah, he was just, he's been storing some of the stuff in there.
Thank you.
Until he had a decision.
What is he storing in there right now? Is this... Okay, thank you.
Lawnmowers, uh, you know, there's no, I mean, he has very little stuff in there right now, okay? Primarily stores a lot of the snow plows that are attached to the trucks and things like that.
Alderman Lazara.
Do you know what kind of ventilation that's in that, that warehouse? I mean, is that just doors, windows?
Yeah, there's two, there's a real large twelve-foot garage door.
Okay, no windows though?
Uh, no.
Okay, and how tall is your ceiling?
The ceiling's probably thirty feet high.
Thirty feet, okay. And is it mostly cinder black, or how?
Yeah, it's, it's brick and cinder black separating the whole thing. It's all brick and cinder black.
And the ceiling?
And the ceiling is a, or a steel-structured ceiling.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you. Either yourself or, or someone else, what is standard procedure for when you store the lawn mowers for the season? Is the gas tank emptied? Is that responsible ownership, or?
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak for the tenant, okay, he's not here tonight, but, you know, obviously, he's assured me that it's just, has been winterized and drained of gas and stuff like that.
So all the products going in and out will be winterized, just like...
Oh, absolutely.
And that's how landscapers do it? Is that standard operating procedure that it's done that way? I'm not sure.
I don't even, you know, I know that that's what he has done, you know, he's assured me that that's what they do, and he has other storage facilities.
Alderman Sosmerzke.
In the years you've owned that building, Jennifer wrote, told us how many businesses have been in there. You've had metal fabrication, which obviously needs ventilation. You've had, you've had a motorcycle repair shop that has oxy-acetylene tanks to do welding and to do everything. You've never had a problem or issue there, have you?
Never.
Okay.
And they've been repairing, you know, motorcycles, and they're filled with gas. And they've been repairing, you know, motorcycles and they're filled with gas. So it's been inspected and it's a solid facility.
I'll make a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can we take a roll call vote?
Alderman Lazara.
The motion was to deny?
To deny.
No.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
No.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
4-3, that passes. Or fails. That's what I meant, but, okay. Next items to be considered at future meetings. Recapture agreements in February, medical marijuana cultivation centers and distribution locations, February. And anti-idling in January. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to call the Public Works Committee meeting to order. Roll call taker, take note that Alderman Winger is in attendance. I'd like to approve the minutes of the meeting for December 12th. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Now, report and recommend, oh, that passes. Report and recommendation for mutual aid resolution, I'd like to turn that over to Matt.
Thank you, sir. The Public Works Department is recommending that the city belong to the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network. The Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network came in about 2007. Originally, back in 2003, DuPage County began the Public Works Mutual Aid Program in DuPage County, which I was an original member of that organization in my former employment. We developed a system of working, public works agencies working together throughout the municipality, or throughout the county, similar to an ILEUS or a box alarm system. If assistance was needed, we would call the county, they would provide other public works departments mutual aid. In 2007, the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network was developed, written basically upon the guidelines of the DuPage County program. This is a statewide program. It's a fee-based program. What will happen is with this plan, if Wooddale would have an emergency, say a flood or a storm event, and we would need assistance, we would contact DuPage County. All resources of DuPage County will be taxed through the DuPage County Public Works Mutual Aid Program initially. And then if assistance is still needed for the city of Wooddale, they would reach out to IPLMAN. They would provide us with assistance. The fee is a hundred dollars a year. Basically, what we would get is five free days worth of assistance by, from outside municipalities. We would also be asked to provide assistance to municipalities that are in need. Say the city of Rockford would have a major tornado or something come through and they were a member of IPLMAN, we may be asked to take our equipment and our employees and go to Rockford to provide them with assistance. At the same time, if Wooddale was struck with the same event, they would be asked to come and provide us with assistance. So at this time, we're asking the committee to allow us to bring forth a resolution at the next meeting to approve membership within IPLMAN and then also to allow us to sign the agreement to become part of the, part of the organization.
Matt, I have a question. You were saying that we, we can only receive five days of aid?
It's five free days of aid. We can receive aid after those days. We would, we could then be charged by the outstanding municipalities for the services that we receive. But if we're going to have an issue here in town that we're going to receive aid for more than five days, there will probably be FEMA or IEMA money involved that we could then charge that against and then char, and then.
So in return, if we can only get five days, how, how many free days do we have to give?
We don't, there's no, it's, it's a total voluntary network.
Okay.
So if, if we use, you know, 75 days worth of people, that doesn't mean we have to give back 75 days worth of people. We, it's all voluntary. So we, what we would do is, kind of, in an example is, in Carroll Stream where I came from, we used the Public Works Mutual Aid Program when we had our windstorm come through for seven days. When the next guy called from Public Works Mutual Aid and said, hey, I need help, you don't stand in your shell and say, we're not going to help you. We go and help. So it's kind of the same thing. If we ask for assistance and municipalities come and help us, then the next time the phone rings, you know, we answer it and we.
But you do have the right to refuse.
We have the right at any time to refuse.
Right.
There's also things involved in here, like we say that we have a, we have one chipper. You know, if we're using the chipper or if the chipper doesn't work, we can say we can't send it. Or if they say we need a vector truck for three days in Effingham, we can't be without a vector truck here for three days. So we'll, we would refuse that.
Or if we go, Matt, and, and they want it longer and we can't, we can pull out?
Yes, at any time. Basically, what would happen is during these events, as most of you guys, I'm sure you guys have all gone through the ICS, ICS training, there's time periods and standard operating procedures that are put in. So if the, the work period is from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM, we would say that we would provide equipment for that time. If we have to then pull out at 12:00 AM, we could pull our, we could pull our equipment out. Just as long as we're in constant contact with these people to make sure that they can backfill our position for us.
And you've seen it on a practical level? You've actually seen it at work?
I've seen the, the Public Works Mutual Aid Program, which is basically the same system at, at work. And it does, it does work very seamlessly. You get a lot of really good people because when the city of Wooddale would, if we would be asked to send somebody, we would probably send our best people and put our best foot forward too. And that's what we were receiving from these other communities. We were receiving their best people. We weren't receiving the guy that didn't know how to run a chainsaw. You know, we were, we were having their arborists come in. We were having their best equipment. Because everybody wants to put their good foot forward and it's a great opportunity for public works organizations to work together.
Matt, do you know how many communities are in this currently?
I believe there's about 140 or 50 throughout the whole state right now.
Any of our neighboring communities?
Well, I can tell you Villa Park is, I believe Addison is, Bartlett, Carroll Stream are very involved in the, are very involved in them, so.
Okay. Eugene Wesley, Alderman Eugene.
I, I believe this was, a couple of years ago, this came forward too, that we, we voted to move forward with this. So is this a every year renewal or, or what? Because I, I think this came forward before.
Yeah, this actually came forward as part of the budget planning process for this fiscal year. It was, actually, we really started moving forward on it after a presentation at DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference. It was one of their showcases. And so we plugged that in as an expanded level item in the budget. And this was last year this time, basically, budget planning. So that's when you remember talking about it.
May I do a follow-up question? I think this is a good program because being a past fireman, you get the help right away and whatever it takes to get the job done, they get the job done.
Have you seen it in action, Eugene?
I, I have seen it in, in Addison, the news. Addison did call them out. And I will tell you, when a windstorm came through here in Addison, it knocked out, I believe Addison rode all those trees. I'll tell you one thing, it's, it's a great organization to be members of. It, it works quite well in Addison. I believe Roselle's in it. The only question I have to, to you, Matt, so I, I think it's worth going, so I would recommend that we go forward. The question I have to you is, in here, it doesn't say how many guys we have to commit to them. Is it, do we have to commit? I know for safety reasons, you have to commit two. Okay, is there a guaranteed, it didn't say how many guys they are asking for?
Go ahead.
Sure. The, what we've always said is it's always two-man crew that goes any location for, for safety issues. But we never, there's no requirement to provide services. It's voluntary. So if they call us up and they say, we need, you know, six guys and six, or in three dump trucks or six dump trucks or whatever, just to haul debris, we might send six guys and six dump trucks. But I'm not going to send one guy just by himself in a dump truck. I might send two guys and two dump trucks. The, so there's never, there's no minimum. So if, if the phone ring, if I answer the phone and they, they say, I need you to go to, you know, Bulling Brook, if I say, no, I'm not going to Bulling Brook, we, you know, I got five guys on vacation, I can't, you know, that's fine. But if I can send people, then we, we send whatever, whatever request they have, if we can fill that request.
Go ahead, Eugene.
That, that's why this organization is so big and he says like 140, I mean, I'll tell you one thing, as soon as it activated in Addison, I'd say within, probably within seven, eight hours, they had crews coming and removing trees and everything else. So I would strongly suggest moving forward with this for a hard, whatever it's called, a hard buck. It, it's a hard buck. That's my motion.
Alderman, oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
I still have a question.
Uh, yeah, we still have a question. Alderman Sizmarzki.
Who's in, who's, who's the liability go to if they damage our equipment on another town or another, one of our employees is injured in another town?
Yeah. The liability still stays with, with the municipality. They, the.
So even though we're helping somebody else?
Yeah. Because really, to do it any other way, it's, it's more of a legal issue. Fees wouldn't be a hundred dollars. They'd probably be more in the tens of thousands of dollars because there would be, have to be some sort of blanket insurance policy. So when we send someone to someplace else, they are still basically under the guise of us, following the direction of the leaders down there. The other thing is that if we would send equipment, our guys operate the equipment. Nobody else operates our equipment.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have a first motion and a second? We do? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Okay, passes? Thank you.
Thank you.
Items to be considered at future meetings. Stream bank stabilization in February, Salt Creek cleanup day in February, South Cedar streetlights, January, February, School Street Lights, January, February, and intersection safety improvement phase three construction supervision contract in February. Anything to add? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I, I just have one question. Well, actually, two questions. South Cedar and School Street, they submitted applications or petitions? Is that why that's coming forward?
Um, the South Cedar one, there was a survey done before I started here that there was a, a positive response. And the School Street, I think is just going, go ahead.
School Street may be police, police department driven, not citizen driven.
Oh, the streetlights, School Street?
Yeah, it's going to be down at, at the cul-de-sac, the turnaround, by the parking lot area.
Okay, and my other question, now that you're here, what's the status on I task the street, streetlights?
Go ahead, Jeff.
I mean.
I know this, I just talked about it this week. They will be overhead, they will be overhead lights. We just wrapped up our talks with the comm ed, external affairs rep that is in charge of getting the new lights. They're plugging it, plugging it in for installation quarter one of 14.
Quarter one of 14?
Yeah.
Before the end of March.
Okay. And then you're going to contact that one party then?
We already reached out to that resident.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Against? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Alderman. As you know, in 2011, we kind of stepped up and started streamlining our strategic planning process where we develop a booklet and then every other year, we have a, a summer workshop session to make changes to the booklet moving forward. In the off years, it gives us kind of a year to track the progress, bring reports to the city council. So this past summer happened to be the every other year where we do a planning session and update the booklet. So that being said, I know we've talked about it at length over the summer and I didn't include the whole plan in the PowerPoint. You have the whole plan in your, in your packet. I just, this will be quick. I just have a couple of slides. The slides represent the additions or, or changes to the plan. These are the strategic priorities. They've been the same since '11. Those are the nine categories that we kind of use to categorize all of our different initiatives. Those always stay the same. We're usually able to fit all of our initiatives into at least one of those nine priorities. This is priority one, appearance, character and quality of the community. Along the way, I just threw in a couple of graphics with some of the interesting projects we have going on right now. This is one of the, the changes. This isn't really a change. This was a new addition since when we created the plan last time, we did not have the Euler Plan complete. So the objective obviously would be the implementation of the Euler Plan, which we're already starting. As you know, we're, we're working in coordination with HR Green to do what we can while the intersection is under construction, do what we can with the aesthetic improvements involved in the Euler Plan. And we really want to develop a phasing approach to the downtown plan. For instance, you'll see that picture on the right, you know, that's something that we can do with the intersection safety improvements. And the, the one on the left, obviously, that would be a couple of years down the road. So that is new to this year's plan. Then we have, and interject any time if anybody has any questions. Again, this is a, a new one. The council decided it'd be a priority to create a quiet zone throughout the city. And then we have these new actions, which we've already kind of started. And we want to make sure we follow through with the actions necessary to establish that quiet zone. You may remember about a week or two ago, we did get a notification that we've got some capital funding for the quiet zone. So that's helped a, a great bit. I believe it's over, a little over 500 grand, 590. So again, that's a new project.
Can I ask, ask a question? That quiet zone, so since the money's available, no, I'm sorry. I'm just going, since he's talking. The money's available now for that quiet zone, right? Go ahead.
We've, we've, we got a letter that we've got some funding. We haven't had the kickoff meeting yet. That's later this month. The chief is in charge of that. Now that, the letter, we've got some funding, it looks like, for the Ash Street Crossing. That's specifically what the funding's for. But if we have to make modifications to Wooddale Irving area, we may need to come up with some, some of our own money. It's, it's really not clear. It's kind of still a work in progress.
So since that 500 came available, that should go in a priority because we don't want to lose the funding for that. Because we don't wanna lose the funding for that. Am I, is that part of priority on that one?
Well, yeah, I mean, the project itself is a, a priority. We wanna, we've already investigated pros and cons of a quiet zone. Um, if we decide to move forward, one of the things we're working on now is working with, uh, Bensonville, ITASKA. They've got, um, or they could have some engineering firms working on it. Maybe we can share that same engineering firm to, to kinda make a cohesive, uh, grouping. We've already, obviously, been looking for funding, 'cause we've already gotten some direction from the council that they wanna do this, and with deciding on self-funding, we may need to come up with a shortfall, like I said.
Just gonna mention that, uh, this funding, uh, Jeremy and I, today, we're trying to set up the final meeting date with IDOT. But what this'll do is this'll upgrade, the grant is to upgrade the circuitry, the timing circuitry that we talked about, that we have to have before we can even consider applying for a quiet zone. So this will do that, and it's gonna make that intersection more safe, and that will allow us to apply for the quiet zone. So yes, it is the funding that'll allow us to go forward with the quiet zone, but this doesn't make it a quiet zone. It improves it to where we can apply to be one. So, and that's where we'll work with the other towns that the city manager was talking about, to become a region-wide quiet zone.
Five hundred and some thousand, I guess, that that's worth the dollar amount, what, five hundred thousand?
Five ninety.
That's us doing the signal?
Yes.
And that's not to make it a quiet zone?
Right.
Okay.
Um, no, the, the, the other cost to make it a quiet zone, um, won't necessarily be cost prohibitive. Uh, we may have to still look at installing a center median, which I think the estimates on that were up to thirty thousand. But this is the big chunk of the funding that we couldn't even consider looking at a quiet zone until all this safety work was done, and that's what this is supposed to cover. Mayor.
Yeah, if I remember right, and that, that one meeting, when we discussed the amounts between, by the train station by Ash, was almost seven hundred thousand, so we're still about a hundred thousand short. But there was some discussion, I think you said, some of the things may not be needed. So it might be pretty close to happening at all, right?
Correct. Correct, and, and that's what'll come out of this meeting too, and we'll learn exactly what's gonna be fixed, so.
Any other questions?
Um, so the, uh, next slide, um, this was a, uh, new item. Um, it was discussed, um, with, uh, you know, the increased focus on either, you know, property maintenance or the increased, um, anticipated, um, building activity with the Algen O'Hare, that it may be, um, time to add an employee within the community development department. Now, keep in mind that, uh, in the C I P this year, we also, uh, have a, a staffing study to see in anticipation of the Algen O'Hare, um, if we may need more employees. Um, and again, this is not, it's not like we're approving, hiring, uh, another employee tonight. This was just something that's a priority moving forward, to make sure we give it its due diligence to look into this, um, down the road.
Mayor.
Just so we're clear, this, this is not saying we're gonna hire a guy. Manager just said, we may need down the road as Storm Dale and all this stuff comes about. As of right now, it's not happening.
Alderman Woods?
I just want one plus the half we hired, or add the other half, so we have a full plan, which was what our prior conversation was.
Mr. Murris?
From discussions right now, it would be, um, keep the, uh, part-time and add another full-time. And if, and if anybody feels uncomfortable with the wording in the, in the booklet you guys have, we can always just put, uh, investigate hiring instead of hire a full-time.
So, so my question here-
We accept the change.
Okay, so my question here, tonight, we're going to vote, or making a recommendation that we approve this treaty plan, okay? I will tell you right now, my vote will be no if that's in there. Until we see the budget, I, I, there's no way we should even be employing personnel in strictly planned. The strictly planned is for construction and projects and that. That is not considered a project, far as I'm concerned.
Well, think of it as a framework, and we've done this exact same thing in the past. Our, our, our previous strategic plan had the special, specialized landscaper in there to investigate that for Public Works, um, and we ended up going through the budget process and hiring that employee. So this isn't the first time this has been in a plan, this is the second time.
Mayor.
Even if it's passing the C I P, when the budget comes out, it'll be an expanded level item, correct, Brad? Or Jeff? It'll be, so then, that's when the council have the vote, the yes or no to the position? Or half a position, or whatever the case may be? And that's the time where the final vote on hiring or adding, or half a position, full position, will be done. This doesn't do it. Yes or no?
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, that's correct. This is a, a pure planning document, this allocates no funds or priorities to anything. It's just more of a concept plan. Um, you know, if that's something that, you know, you don't even wanna look into, I mean, you know, that, that's one thing. But just from a planning standpoint, you have to have some plan, you have to have a roadmap for what you wanna possibly look at. And so that's why this is in there, yeah, there, there's no, no allocation, there's no job posting, you know, tomorrow morning or anything like that. This is completely just a theoretical concept, and, uh, anything, hiring of anybody would have to come through the budget process and be vetted that way, uh, which will come out in, on February fifteenth. Fourteenth, I'm sorry.
Um, next, uh, priority area, communication and civic involvement. Um, obviously, uh, one of the big things we've got going on right now is, um, our new website. We're always looking for ways to improve upon communication with the residents. We recently started, um, showing our, our council videos on YouTube, uh, makes it much more user-friendly. So the one in bold, number five, is, is a new addition from the last plan. Explore electronic methods of communication with citizens, such as topic-oriented email subscriptions. You may have seen on our website now, we have, um, a program you can sign up for, for e-newsletter, you can sign up for reverse nine-one-one. So with the new website, we're trying to get more proactive, um, more email-type blast things, um, Twitter and all that type of fun stuff, um, is all kinda moving forward with the new website, um, down the road, so.
Alderman Wesley?
Where's the YouTube?
Well, the YouTube is up there because we just recently started showing the council videos on YouTube with a link off of our site, so it makes it more user-friendly, easier for residents to get.
So we're gonna do videos? Okay. Could I, could I add one, could I add, recommend that we look in something else? Uh, pick up the newspaper today, um, it's just unfortunate that another town is, uh, Westmont is going to something with apps, that you can tap into the apps on the phones. Uh, download their apps or something. Is there a way that we could look into that in this treaty plan? And call Westmont and see what they, it was in the Daily Herald today, that they download some apps on their phones, if you want?
As, as part of the new website, I know, um, Nick can come out and talk more about it, but just briefly, I know the new website has the mobile capability, so when you're on the road and you bring up your phone, it's, uh, mobile app technology for Wooddale News.
Maybe that's what they, maybe that's what they talk about then. I just seen in the, uh, Daily Herald today, and I thought that was a pretty good idea.
The website will be able to scale down on any mobile device, so from a seven-inch tablet to a three-inch smartphone. And the site will be representative of itself on those devices. So as things scale down, they will become buttons and look like an app and feel like an app, but they're still going to be the website.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, the ones in bold, number two and three, were both new additions, uh, this past summer. Uh, reexamine how the city contributes donations to not-for-profits. That's something we had talked about in the past with some type of, uh, Wooddale Charity Ball. I know, um, some work has been done on that already, some letters have been sent out per the council direction, and staff will be given an update on that in short order. And the other, uh, number three was, was mentioned as a possibility, um, for vehicle stickers. Instead of just doing the standard wind sculptures or Wooddale logo, um, you know, get some civic involvement, go to the schools, see if we can have a, uh, you know, a design contest for the sticker, so that was a, a new addition. Um, infrastructure, um, this seems to, uh, come up, um, from time to time. Private streets, private ponds, and private ponds with regional significance. Um, I know number three, there is an item in the, uh, C I P forthcoming. Um, and we just wanna make sure we shore up our stance, um, on all these and maintain, uh, consist, uh, consistency, um, I think is the, uh, uh, main goal here. So those are all, uh, new initiatives that we really need to make sure that we formulate a plan and stay consistent with it. Um, then going along with infrastructure, um, we do have, um, a new staff member now, um, our contracts manager. He is, uh, working along with our public works director, myself, and Brad. And we'll, from time to time, um, obviously, it's important to tweak, uh, the bid review proposal process. We wanna make sure that, you know, we, um, when we send out RFQs or whatever, we have, um, a formalized way of doing it. We have a bullet point list that we check through, and everything's done in the proper order than it needs to be done. Um, so just really examine that, um, on an annual basis. Reliable revenue base and effective asset management, um, really the only new ones here, numbers seven, eight, and nine. Now, these are not meaning that we're gonna do it, but these are meaning that we wanna look into it seriously. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion at the summer session about eliminating vehicle stickers for seniors. Um, of course, uh, water rates, uh, and that discussion, and also a formulation of amusement tax. Those were all mentioned at the summer session. So if we're not seriously considering investigating these, specifically probably number seven and nine, then we can take them out. But the majority of the summer session was to, to leave them in. Um, responsive, accountable, and cost-effective government. Um, these, this categories are, are both new actions, one and two. Again, with our new employee, the council dictated that we really wanted to make sure we focus on, on contracts, and also kinda stem off and work together with the finance department, kinda streamline purchasing, um, make sure that we review and revamp any processes that we have, um, improve on them. And I know that we're all, uh, tired of, you know, seeing, uh, eight bolts bought on this list of bills, and nine bolts on the next list of bills, so that's one of the things, um, that we're, um, taking seriously and trying to, uh, improve upon, um, by adding this in, in there. Uh, number six is the only new item here, um, new financial software. Again, you'll, you'll see a lot of this stuff in the C I P or a budget down the road, and, and then that's where you get to talk about it. I know that the new financial software is plugged into the C I P, um, not this year, I don't even think it's next year, but maybe two, two fiscal years down the road, that's when that would be coming forward. But there has been, um, a push from, uh, elected officials and staff, um, to improve our financial software. So that's something that we'll likely need to do down the road. Um, number eight, the only new item, and we hear about this, uh, quite a bit. City code update, obviously, uh, the code is massive, and, uh, a lot of it, uh, becomes outdated. And it's not until we have an issue, um, with a certain section of the code, we look at it and we say, hey, that's outdated. Um, well, we're gonna try to take a new approach and proactively go through the city code and proactively change those things that are outdated, instead of waiting for the situation to come to you. So I know, um, that was an initiative by, um, the council that they wanted us to look into. Um, that's probably gonna be a multi-year effort, um, don't think we're gonna get that done quickly. Um, this is the last category that we had changes in, stewardship of the environment. It was just basically one small item. I know the Clean Air Counts Committee is always big on new initiatives, and this is just simply, uh, number five, promote charging stations for electric, uh, cars, um, to go along with all the other green initiatives that the city has. So those were the only changes. We have a lot of actions that have been completed, um, that you see in your update booklets. We have a lot of items that are ongoing. Um, so, that being said, um, all we're looking for tonight is, um, basically consensus to adopt the new strategic plan that's updated, and then, uh, we would work on that plan for the next two years, and we'd have an update session in the off year. So this is just an easy way for staff and council to kinda track some of the larger things as we progress along with all the items that the council, uh, deems important.
Any questions? Need a motion to, for the report and recommendation of passing of the strategic plan?
I make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A report and recommendation for a water rate discount for veterans? Is it Brad?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of months ago, um, at one of the committee meetings, uh, the topic came up of adding, uh, veterans to the water and garbage discount that's currently in place for the seniors and disabled. Um, so we have before you, um, a little bit of analysis of the impact, uh, we think, based upon the response we got on the vehicle sticker sales, uh, for the veterans. Um, and we would need to, uh, just update the city code to add the phrase veterans to that section of the code. Um, so tonight, I would be looking to, to do, uh, should you want to, is get direction, uh, to have the attorney draft the appropriate ordinance to update the code, add the phrase veteran, uh, to that section of the code for the discount program.
Mayor, uh, Alderman Woods?
Brad, currently, what's the discount they get? Is it, it's a set amount they get? Is that correct?
Correct, it's ten dollars off of their water and five off of the garbage, so fifteen dollars total.
So each month, they get fifteen dollars total off their utility bill, water, sewer, garbage?
Correct, um, and just as a reminder, they do have to meet certain income thresholds, um, as said by HUD. And, uh, it's, it's a little bit above the poverty level, but not that much higher than the poverty level, I don't think.
Well, part of my question is because if, if they're at that level, you know, part of my question is, is the fifteen, well, I'm sure the fifteen helps. I guess I'll, I'll field any interest for raising that to twenty or twenty-five bucks? And including the seniors, if it's needs-based, uh, I would be okay with that.
Anyone in it?
I would just say that it was, uh, five and five until, I believe, two fiscal years ago, then it got raised to ten and fifteen, so.
Ten and five.
Or ten and five, rather, sorry, for a total of fifteen.
Yeah, but proportionally, our bills have gone up to, to outweigh that, so, and again, to bring it in line. We all know those statistics by the government are pretty low, so it's, it's a low number, and if you're at that number, again, I'll say fifteen helps, but probably, matter of fact, I'll make a, a motion to approve it for the veterans and raise the, the fee from fifteen, or the reduction from fifteen to twenty-five dollars. Is that just for veterans or for everyone? For veterans and the seniors.
Second.
On a needs base.
Alderman Winger?
But no, it, it's a second, it is.
She just seconded.
Okay.
Thank you.
Eugene Wesley?
Uh, I have a, I have a question. I mean, I have no problem doing this, but what if you have a, a family that lives in the community that is a low income, I mean, really low income, are we doing that too, for twenty-five? I mean, we do it, and, 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 believe me, I'm not picking on the seniors or veterans here, but we do have some low-income people that live in this town too, that barely could afford their water bill now, or, or that. If you're gonna do it, you might as well do it for the low, low incomes to meet the threshold of whatever you require, the dollar amount, then you might, we'll give them the twenty-five dollars too, if that's the case. 'Cause they have to meet a, a, a dollar amount, am I correct, for the discount? So if that is the case, and you might bring it out for the people that can't, is below that income too, not those veterans and seniors, because you have, you have to understand, we just had a guy come here and gave a presentation that we do have low-income families in this community, and I think they are entitled to it too. I'm just saying that. I, I'm not, I'm in favor of this, but do it across the board.
Alderman Zar?
Thank you. Like Alderman Wesley were saying, I, I think that, um, having something for the veterans is a very good idea. Um, what brings me to the point of what, um, some of the Aldermans have been discussing, um, is a complete program. Brings me to the point of what some of the aldermen's have been discussing is a complete program for not just veterans and the seniors and, and the people that are low-income, but something that can help the community as far as everyone. So I think this might be a good starting point, but I, I would really like to see us have some discussion as to helping anyone that lives in Wooddale with this water bill. So I would say, yes, let's definitely, you know, do something for the veterans. And I agree with Alderman Woods to raise it to twenty-five dollars. Thank you.
Alderman Wesley.
If we're going to do that for everyone too, when are we going to do this? If we're going to do the veterans today, are we going to do the poverty level? Six months? Are we going to do this immediately? Are we going to start working on doing a program like next month? I don't want to wait, I don't want to sit here and vote for, for a program like this and when I'm helping those other people too, that a single mother that's on a poverty level is doing the same thing. Because I know that some people in my area is going to sit there and say, great, you just gave twenty dollars, twenty dollars off for, for veterans and seniors and stuff, but how about me that's barely making it? I got a kid to survive and I'm doing this all by myself. So I'd like to do this immediately if we're going to do it.
Alderman Woods.
I'm, I would agree with the total program, just for this evening, passing the veterans and the seniors because they're already on the books is probably the easier one. And have staff look into adding the low-income, single parent, whatever category you want to call it because it probably takes a little more time and thought to put some parameters to that. But I would be in full favor and we could say, you know, have them start on that so that it comes to us as soon as, how long would it take you to put numbers together and, and bring that back, Mr. Wilson?
Excellent question.
Thank you.
You know, I, I would say probably sometime in February, maybe late February, we could have something put together with the, the other stuff we have going on right now. So I, I would want to reach out to other communities around us as well and see what they do and how they, they do it. You know, the, the thing with the, and not to be de minimis in this, but what the seniors is, you know, their fixed income pretty much is what their fixed income is going to be.
Correct.
You know, the, the good thing about people that are younger, they have the ability a lot of times to improve their scenario. And so we'd have to, to set the parameters such that, you know, we would want to check to make sure that they still need the program, then they would still get the program. But if they get, if they get that job making, you know, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year, perhaps, you know, if they don't need it anymore, then that money should go to somebody that, that does need that money then at that time. So we're not looking to kick anybody off per se, but, you know, correct, correct, yeah. Yeah, so just, we'll just need to structure it such that we're being mindful of that, but not trying to be heavy-handed in this situation.
Things to bring into the equation. Okay, so.
Mayor, please.
I mean, the tax for dollars, I think equates, I think we're doing about twenty-one thousand for fifteen dollars, so it's another fourteen thousand dollars that this would basically in, to the budget, to the final, if I remember right. I think it was seven thousand, we raised it up to fourteen thousand or twenty thousand. And if I remember right, the people that do qualify for this program is only three percent of the residents. And, and I agree with Alderman Wesley. I mean, we do have some people that are falling on hard times. And I know the discussions when they came up the last time was, well, how's staff going to keep an eye on who's still not out of work and, you know, it's going to require more staff time. But I don't have a problem with the ten dollars, but I'll say, like I said before and all along, I know there's supposed to be a ninety cents or eighty-five cent increase in May, according to the water study and all that stuff. And I know I've been told that we're going to discuss it at the council level and, and that's when we really need to buckle down. To give ten dollars tonight, an extra ten dollars, it's, you know, it's all sounds great. But then we're going to burden everybody with eighty or ninety cents. You might as well not give them the ten dollars because you're going to take it right back.
So you're saying we shouldn't give them the ten bucks?
No, no, we could give them the ten dollars, but I don't want to charge them fifteen come May.
I agree. I'm just trying to cross one bridge and that's tonight. And then, obviously, you know, good point.
I think it's only going to cost us fourteen thousand. If I remember my numbers right, I think there's an extra fourteen thousand to the budget. Okay, you know, and that's adding the veterans that qualify. In long-term though, you know, this eighty cents, if not this year or next year, that's besides the city of Chicago and Page Water Commission increases I'm talking about. Those are the ones, the ones that we can control, we need to control. Those are the discussions we really need to have. And I know this is not tonight. Tonight's just about the ten dollars. That's council, I don't have a problem with that, but I just don't want to give ten dollars tonight and take back twelve in May. That's kind of ridiculous. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Water is going to become a hot commodity. We got to pay attention.
Mr. Wilson.
Just a quick point of clarification, the, the fifteen dollars now is technically five on the water side and five on the garbage side. And there was a certain subset that doesn't have the garbage, they're in like an association or something like that. So is the will of the council to have the tall ten on the water or to do five and five or what's the direction? I'm, I'm guessing it's probably all ten on water, but I just want to clarify that.
I would say put the ten on the water.
It's ten and five, right? You said five and five.
Ten.
Not only twenty and five.
Twenty and five, correct. Everyone uses water. If the second are, are agreed.
Second are agreed?
Yes.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries other items to be considered in future meetings is CIP, January twenty-third. And the two proposals, January twenty-third. Anything else to be added? Mr. Wilson.
I don't know if it comes under this committee or not. I think it does, but I'd like an update on Front Street with the grant that, the money that we give them for the engineering and stuff. I mean, it's been a while. Yeah, but some of it's financing. I don't know where, is it going under finance? Is it going under planning? It's been under planning and zoning, so we might as well just keep it there. Doesn't matter to you where it pops out. I don't care where it goes. Talk about it. Yes. Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, we actually, staff had a meeting with one of the owners out there yesterday, actually. There was some language discussion on the, the actual agreement, the contract itself between the city and the owners there. There's been some, I don't know, issues that have, I think, since resolved themselves. And so it's still moving forward at this time. But it's still, it's still out there. It's still moving forward, so. Yeah, I mean, Mr. Forrest can probably give you a little better details than I want to give right now on camera, but it's, it's still moving forward.
Mr. Woods.
Can, for the items to be added, can we make sure that we add, looking into the other category for the garbage and water bill so that it doesn't get lost?
Mayor.
Brad, that's coming up. I budget, people were telling me we're going to talk about that. Do you have a budget? Do you have somebody to do the water? Are we going to have a separate discussion?
Correct. Budget time and then census hardship programs coming up, I'm sure some of that'll get rolled into that as well.
Any other questions? Need a motion for adjournment?
Second.
One more thing. I'd like to commend the city on the Reverse 911. That was very good. It went very well this time with the, with the code and the warming center and everything else. So they did a good job on that. And Public Works did an excellent job on the second snowfall too. I thought they did an excellent job, so. Send that to staff, would you please, Jeff? That's it.
Aye.
Aye.
Your turn.